Okay, folks, 3:30. So Core Competencies Phase Two, Part Two. Ms. Spiegel, yours? Ms. Gleason, yours?
Hi, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director. I interact with all of you very frequently via email, so you'll probably know most of this already, but feel free to stop me at any time. Or did you want questions at the end? Okay, questions at the end, perfect. Okay. So the leadership team on here is much larger than these, but this is primarily the group that you all interact with on a regular basis. So Todd Jones, he's not here today. He's handling a large water main break at our facility at the moment. Brian Schatt, our city engineer. Gary Stats, our traffic engineer. So when you reach out to Gary for a traffic study, generally what happens is he has to wait for a box to become available. It's a traffic counting and speed box. Once it becomes available, he generally sets it for around one to two weeks, depending on the location, and then he follows back up with that speed data for you. So he probably does at least 50 or more of those per year for everyone. Clay Merritt, our capital manager, and then Dan Myers is at our water pollution control plant. So this is just basically the budget. We'll be going through that in January, but pretty much stayed pretty headcount neutral over the last several years. The decrease you see there is the group of employees that did move over into Neighborhood Services as we transitioned that. So our core services, customer service, of course. We do our best to respond. We take around 12,000 requests a year, so we do our best to respond timely. We do get a lot of requests for Iowa American Water, for Mid-American Energy, and we help shuffle those around and get them to the right place. Asset management, obviously. We do have our Work Order Management System that tracks all of our sewer assets, street assets, facilities assets, all of our clean water assets. If at any point anyone would like data from that system, it's pretty easy to pull and kind of show metrics on and what Public Works is doing. Capital management is the execution of the engineering projects, and then obviously being fiscally responsible with how we spend our capital dollars. And emergency response, which we've all seen too much of the last two years, I'm afraid. So the one question we get a lot in the winter, we probably answer this at least six to 10 times on every single snowstorm, is why are you plowing my neighbor's alley but you don't plow my alley? So the general answer is half the time, it isn't even us. It's a white truck, and everyone associates every single white truck with the city. So a lot of times, it's a private contractor. When it is a city truck, it's a member of our solid waste crew in a small plow, plowing ahead of a solid waste garbage truck because it's a known difficult alley. And with how large and bulky those solid waste trucks are, they have to actually plow a certain number of alleys in advance to ensure that the solid waste can be collected. But if there is a question about it, feel free to send it to us. We do have all those alleys identified. Why isn't there a stop sign or traffic light on this street? So whenever we do get this question, we do review with people why it's important to meet traffic counts and warrants and conditions to have a traffic light or stop sign or things like that. A lot of people think the stop sign will solve a problem. However, if it's a road that shouldn't have a stop sign, it could actually cause more problems than it will solve. So Gary does a really great job, and Brian working through, trying to explain what things do and don't meet those traffic warrants. Why did you fix this block of street in my block right next to it? It's terrible, and you didn't fix my block, too. So a couple answers to that one. First one is our crews are limited in the amount and type of work they can do in any given stretch of road due to the DOT bidding rules in the state of Iowa. So if that's the case, we've just stopped there because that's as far as we can go. And we try to match up projects that are best for our internal crews versus projects that are best to be bid out to contractors. So it's definitely a balance of a fiscal constraint and then a size constraint based on those DOT rules. The next one is, I set my trash out late. Will you still come get it? And the answer is yes. If you're not a habitual offender, we will come back out for free. If you do it every month, at some point, we'll start charging for that service. We just ask that everyone has their trash set out by 7:00 a.m., and that way you won't be missed. Why is a city allowing a contractor to dig near my sidewalk? So a lot of times, when we have the fiber optics, the cable companies, even Iowa American Water, Mid-American Energy, those are all easements that are prescribed in the plat, and they have every right to be there. Generally, you know, they're being courteous and providing some level of notice. If they're not, you know, they still are allowed to be there. If someone's concerned that it's not being restored properly or something's going on that shouldn't be going on, they can always call Public Works. Those companies do oftentimes have to pull permits for this work unless it's an emergency. So we should at least be able to let the resident know what's going on. So our primary partnerships are Mid-American Energy, which we saw in August. Iowa American Water, the Iowa DNR. So wildlife and water quality issues, a lot of times, they get involved either from a permitting standpoint or just kind of sometimes when the Iowa State Drainage Laws get into play, the DNR can kind of help us work through some of those as well. The Iowa DOT, we do meet with them quarterly. We discuss the projects they have planned for Harrison, Brady, Kimberly River Drive. And in addition, you know, we just kind of work through what their capital plan is and what level of communication we have with them. By state planning, we also attend their monthly meetings to work through long-range transportation planning. And then they also do help us a little bit kind of with city bus communication and cross-communication with our transit system and MetroLink. And then our next-door neighbors are the Scott County EMA. So we do meet with them for disaster planning and response when needed. And they did help us quite a bit during the derecho with some of our energy concerns and trying to locate generators. If the power had been up, back, been off much longer, we would have needed a little extra help. So they had helped us find some generators. So the things that are kind of hot issues right now is Division Street. So as many of you saw, that there is two-way traffic back today, and we're expecting that construction to be done by the end of October. 53rd Street, they are continuing to work on the first section now. And then the next section, which is the eastern to Elmore Circle, is currently under design. The 1930s sewer is still underway and expected to be done sometime in the spring of '21. And then our CP rail crossings, they're still targeting to be done by the end of this calendar year. That's kind of Public Works in a very small nutshell, but if you guys have any other questions, happy to answer them.
Anyone? Ms. Alderman-Dorman?
Thanks, Nicole. First off, you guys do have great customer service. I went and got a building permit today, and everyone was nice and friendly and helpful. But it would be nice if there was like a building code for dummies because it was kind of hard to read it. But they walked me through what I was doing wrong and got me straightened away. So then, that also being said, I know stop sign and where they are or where they aren't, and that's all done with traffic counts. Is it possible specifically at Elm Street and Elmore to add that back in as soon as the bridge opens again and not wait until the traffic count comes back up?
Yeah, I believe we had planned to. That was just a removal just because we had noted with it closed. But that is not one we had planned to permanently remove. So unless traffic, I mean, we planned to put it back in, and then if something drastically different happens, we could reevaluate.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be one that'd be nice to just kind of go seamlessly with the project. And then this one, this next one, is probably a way bigger discussion that we'll talk about next Tuesday. But alleys, everyone's favorite thing. Is it possible to do those with the city crew if they're limited to their, to only doing so much stretch of our residential streets? I would think that would be kind of perfect for like alleys, which are that smaller-scale things that can probably, I would think, knock them out pretty quickly. Is that a way we could move this process along to fix more?
And that, again, comes back down to kind of prioritization and council goals. So right now, our crews are primarily in neighborhood streets that you've all requested that are asphalt and within our capabilities and a good fit. So potentially, they'd be a good fit, but then that would then press a bunch of the neighborhood streets back. So it's definitely a balance.
And I know we're talking about that on Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I'm sure more to come there next Tuesday. I should say not tomorrow. And then the last, I got a handful of questions about like just restoring after utility work. So one was about like when Metronet first came to like Main Street, they wanted to make sure they were getting bricks back in their alley after they were being torn up. But then I've also had complaints about like crabgrass or bad grass being used as a backfill instead of whatever grass someone had in their yard. And also people not having their property restored completely black. Like there's still maybe divots or it was unlevel compared to what it was. Do we routinely like check in on that to make sure our partners are being good partners with us? Or is it a case-by-case basis with stuff like that?
We check. Obviously, with the volume that we've had, it's a little bit more challenging. If we do note an issue, we'll require that they fix it. If a resident calls and has an issue, we always send an inspector. And if it's out of compliance, we do request that they fix it. Where we lots of times get into kind of the trouble spots is that someone will call four years after the project was done. And they're like, it never, it was never right. And it's like, well, you're kind of out of luck now. Like, we needed to know kind of within a couple months that it wasn't right. So that's generally where we run into the most problem, but otherwise, we can order those repairs. Yep.
That's all, thank you.
Alderman-Lee?
To my surprise, I found out through the Prairie Point Pond that the city owns a series of retention ponds, but they are not parks. But they are under our authority, and I've had another one come up. So could you please explain a little bit the background of how we got those ponds and what the city's authority and responsibility is and related to those ponds? Since the purpose is for the stormwater runoff from the developments themselves. Even as much as I've been involved in this, I'm still a little confused.
Right, so unfortunately, I mean, so there was some that were kind of legacy, I think, when they first kind of started coming into favor as a method for stormwater management. And then there were others that were acquired as kind of a different goal of my predecessor that we now just have, you know, we have them. So whenever, we do have them on regular inspection schedules. And we do then, if they need maintenance or things like that, it depends. We have a balance of kind of in-house crews that do some of that maintenance. And then some of the weed management, the mowing, is outsourced and part of a bid we let about every other year. So...
Public Works pays for it?
Correct. Yep, it comes out of the Clean Water Fund. That's correct. So yeah, so there is just, there's a little bit of a hybrid. Our policy currently is that if a developer is putting in a pond, that the HOA would then take responsibility of it. And we are working right now on kind of a postcard that we want to start sending twice a year in the fall and spring, just saying, hey, reminder, you may want to consider retention, detention, basin, repair this time of year. Just so people, because I think a lot of people forget or are unaware that that's part of their responsibility. So we're working on some more proactive ways to remind people of that.
So your policy, city policy, is not to collect more of those retention ponds under the city ownership?
At this point, no, it is not. Sure.
Good. Alderman-Ambrose?
Thank you, Honor. Nicole, your leadership in Public Works, every year, they get better. It's really incredible. You got an excellent management team that you flashed up on the screen here, and they all have a lot of leadership. So people in Davenport are very fortunate, because every year, your team is working to improve last year's performance. And it really shows, so keep up the good work.
Alderman-Picca?
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Really appreciate it. Nicole, thank you for this presentation on its Core Competencies. And I'm looking at your core services. Two questions for you. Do you think your core services will change over time? Because I hear some departments, you know, they are over, they are evolving over the course of time. Once again, do you think your core services will change over time? And second, do you, what challenges do you foresee in the upcoming future?
So at this point, I think our core services are pretty locked in. I don't really foresee much change. And that kind of the realignment we did with Neighborhood Services, I think really kind of set us up well for the future and how those teams interact with each other. The major challenges, I honestly think are it's water, water, water. It's, you know, obviously, a lot of money has to go into sewer work. It's underground. You don't see it. And in addition, with some of the more intense rainfalls we see, it's very interesting to kind of correlate our stormwater calls with intense rainfalls. So if we get nice, gentle rains for a long time, we get no phone calls, but we get one four-inch rain, and our phones ring off the hook, and people tell us everything's broken. Like, oh, there was water coming out here and there. And we have to remind people that a lot of that water infrastructure was built, you know, for a 100-year storm. And a three- or four-inch storm is maybe a 500, you know, year storm. So there's just a lot of nuances with water, and I feel like that's going to be the longer-term challenge.
And I guess, you know, what, I don't know if the council has spoke to that, you know, what is the long-term goal to try to fix this?
And that's kind of why we keep coming with some stormwater. We'll be having another stormwater work session in the future. It's more just, at this point, to kind of keep you guys involved with the challenges we are having. We do have a lot of challenges with kind of ownership. So if it's a city-owned creek versus a privately-owned property along creeks, there's just a lot of nuances between the law and what we can and can't do. So we just plan to kind of keep you guys in the loop on the work we are doing and the challenges we are having. So for longer-term consideration, we've done excellent job making ordinance changes as far as when we do, when companies are building now or if they're renovating, improving that stormwater infrastructure so we're not exacerbating the problem. And in addition, with the work we're doing on 53rd, we're actually adding more stormwater capacity there. So we are constantly, when we have the opportunity, working to improve things. But with how many parcels we have in the city and these heavy rain events, that's generally when we see the most issues. Yep.
All right. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, sorry, I apologize. Alderman-Dunn?
I just curious, where are we at with the flood study?
So we had our update meeting with HR Green last week, and we're actually looking at days for the kickoff of the virtual and in-person engagement sessions with the public. So the communications team was kind of looking at our calendar to see, they don't want to have too much competing communication going out at the same time. So we're probably looking around right after the election to kick off all of that education and outreach with the public and start getting that feedback. But they did come on site and did our operational review, and they've already reached back with some good questions and follow-up on that. So they're definitely, they're right where I would have expected them to be at this point. Yep.
Very good. No one else?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gleason. Very good. Appreciate all the work Public Works does. You guys do good, and thank you for your presentation. Mr. Dyson?
Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director. So the Parks and Recreation Department is really divided into three operational areas. The first being Parks Operations, which is led by our senior manager, Betsy Tubbs. And then our Recreation Program area is led by our senior manager, Teresa Hallman. And then our Revenue Facilities, which are our three golf courses and the Rivers Edge Sports Complex, are led by Troy Evans. And then fourth one, just because a lot of you guys interact with Daniel Sheridan, he is our Performing Arts Supervisor who oversees the Junior Theater. As far as budget goes, we're been relatively flat. There's been a little bit of an increase in our personnel area, and that's a result of a pay banding exercise we went through with the helps of Human Resources this past year to get our part-time wage scale in line. Our FTEs have stayed relatively flat. So core services, Parks. The operations area, we maintain 38 parks and trails throughout the city, including 35 playgrounds, 30-plus ball dines, 10 tennis courts, 15-plus basketball courts, and numerous other park amenities. Recreation programs, these include all our programs for youth and adults, including athletics, aquatics, performing arts, adaptive programs, garden nature programs. We generally average about 12,000 unique visitors or participants annually with our recreation programs. COVID 2020 has been an interesting year for the programming aspect. We did see a slight dip. Generally, 720 or so programs offered, and we're only able to offer about 540 this past year. Rivers Edge Sports Complex, this is our multi-sport complex on the river next to Modern Woodman Stadium. It's also home to our administrative offices. So if you're ever looking for me in person, that's where I'm at. We have generally about 8,500 public skate visitors annually. And then our golf operations, we operate the three golf courses, Red Hawk, Duck Creek, and Emice. They all have full driving ranges and concession operations. Typically, we do about 56,000 rounds a year. We are actually up this year that where 2020 has been a challenge for programming, it's been sort of a blessing for golf. Golf, we've seen an increase of about 10,000 rounds this year, which is great. So those are our core service areas for Parks and Rec. Questions. Why are there park areas that you don't mow? So years back, we implemented a no-or-low-mow practice for certain areas within parks. And really, it's designed for two things. One, to promote environmental diversity or if a slope or terrain doesn't allow for equipment to be safely on it. The other thing is it does help our operating and our maintenance and associated costs. Who's responsible for trail maintenance? We are responsible. We maintain the 25-plus miles of trail in the, or recreation trail in the city of Davenport. So from snow removal to cleaning and routine maintenance. But any major repairs or sectional repairs or resurfacing, we work hand-in-hand with Public Works on that. And any connections have been identified in the Go Davenport Plan. Are motorized vehicles allowed on parks and trails? We get this a lot. They are not allowed in parks or on trails. And we are working to actually launch a campaign that you'll see later this upcoming spring, a Share the Trail program. One of the other things that we've seen, particularly in 2020, is an increased use of our trail system. Everybody wants to get out down outside, and we have multiple users, user groups, everything from bike riders to walkers, joggers. And for the most part, they are doing a good job. But we need to get some more public input or public awareness out there on how to safely share those trails and use them with others. Why doesn't Parks and Rec have any hardcore space? So we don't have any gyms within our assets. We do work closely with the Davenport schools to utilize their gym spaces for our programming needs, whether that's volleyball or basketball. Again, this year, though, we've had the challenge of not having access to those schools. So that's limited our programming opportunities for some sports. Partnerships include the Davenport School District. Again, we have a shared facilities use with them. We utilize some of their schools for programming. They utilize our golf courses for their teams. Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We provide the AmeriCorps positions for them. They've been a partner since day one in the AmeriCorps grant, which we are the largest AmeriCorps grant in the state of Iowa with close to 100 positions that come with that grant. And then we have numerous Friends organizations, everybody from the Friends of Credit Island, Friends of Andeville, Friends of Off-Road Cycling, and Junior Theater, Inc., and the Roosevelt Community Center. So we rely or we work closely with these Friends organizations. They provide volunteer work for us or fundraising. And then Davenport Little League, they utilize our ball fields, and they volunteer to help maintain those ball fields and run the leagues. And then the Quad City Hockey Association is another large partner. They're the largest renter of ice, and they provide hockey programming for us. As far as work plan updates for us, Main Street Landing, the regional activity area. The RFP was issued for this, for the design competition, but has been postponed due to the COVID-19. Gabe's Play Village, this was our second inclusive feature after the Miracle Field opened last year. We just did the ribbon-cutting last Thursday, and it's getting great, great reviews right now. And then the Riverboat Preparation, we've been involved with helping with the River Heritage Park. Entrance is under construction over the tracks, and then there's some improvements planned for the seawall. That's Parks and Rec.
Very good. Thank you. Any, Alderman-Lee?
For Little League, are there any girls Little League teams and leagues? Are they all boys?
Little League itself, as an organization, allows...
Girls?
Girls as well. We do, there's a girl softball program that runs concurrently with the baseball program.
Okay. The next one is the Goose Creek Disc Golf Course. A friend of ours who's very much into disc golf and has played all of them and many in the area, said it's the best one in the Quad Cities. It's well laid out, it's very clear, and it's fun to play. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you.
And following up on my question with Nicole on those retention ponds, I've had a question, is Liddy Pond, are you considering making that into a park? It's over by Oak Brook.
Yeah, not at this point. That has not come up.
Good, because I, that's what I told him. I couldn't see it, but, okay, thank you very much. I couldn't see it, but, okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, this is Mary and I've got some questions for Chad.
Alderman McGuinness, good to hear you, please.
Thank you. Chad, you and I had some conversations last year when we were driving around doing, getting ready to do Party in the Park. And one of the things in terms of researching those older parks was the phenomenal amount of programming that used to go on in the parks. All kinds of activities for kids that lived around the parks, we talked about that. I asked you at that point, had you been involved or been asked to participate in the juvenile justice discussions? You hadn't at that point. This was a different time, this was two years ago when we talked about this, so this has been a while. I was surprised at that, that Parks wasn't engaged in that. So I guess it's a very open-ended question. So what would it take? If we look at our parks as an asset and we look at issues that we're having with young people perhaps in our urban core areas particularly, there's a lot of concern right now for, for role models, there's a lot of concern for getting them engaged in positive activities and certainly sports and those kinds of things are. What would it take, what would it take for the Davenport Parks and Rec Department to be a part of that solution for a kid and for redirecting to positive activity? And I'm not talking about the, you know, where people have to go skate, ice skate somewhere, but, but activities again where people live. What would that take? And I know that's a huge question, but I love your thoughts on that.
I think we are pretty well positioned with our staffing and our offerings that we could easily translate or move programs back to direct programming in neighborhood parks. That was a big focus and essentially, not to get too deep into the history of Parks and Recreation, but how, you know, neighborhood parks started and the reason for them. And then, you know, in the 90s, we saw a shift to big multi-facility or big facilities with multipurpose and then, and having kids having to be transported to those. And then that presented challenges. So the short answer is the program offerings we have and the staff we have, it's just a matter of making those sort of connections with the neighborhoods. One example I could say, recently, we had a discussion with the Van Buren Park Neighborhood about doing some more programs. They were very interested in, in bringing programs directly to the park and being a part of that work. So I don't think it would take a whole lot. It's just really identifying the areas we want to test pilot some programming and really communicating and getting a sense of what, what those neighbors and what those kids want to do.
Thank you.
There you go, you have Alderman McGuinness. Good. Yep, okay. Alderman Dormo.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've always been curious, what are the like synergies or crossovers that you and Public Works have in terms of like maybe staffing or resources or assets? Do you guys have a lot of the same since like mowing, for example, is something that you guys do? I bet Public Works also does the non-park areas. Vehicles for maintenance, stuff like that, do you guys have a lot of crossover or how does that kind of work?
Yeah, of any of the departments, I would say we work most closely with Public Works. We do primarily all the mowing and stuff in parks, but we work really closely with natural resources. We work with forestry when it comes to, you know, park tree maintenance. We, they obviously maintain our fleet, so yeah, we have a lot of synergies, a lot of crossover with Public Works.
And then with Naheem Marsh, Marsh, is that, do we own that or do you run that or is that independent or all Public Works or?
So the city owns the Marsh and through an agreement with the Eastern Iowa Community College, they actually operate the center out there. We maintain the center, but Brian Ritter, who is the director of Naheem Marsh, he is actually an employee of, of the college.
Okay. And then I really agree with what Marion was saying about how our programming could really be an extension and outreach and could really help, I think, lift up some of our more troubling neighborhoods if we could really get that going. But what do you think is our role in that versus like a partnership with like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, once you already mentioned, or like 180, I know has outreach programs that are kind of in that same space? Things like that, that like public-private partnership are different.
Well, I think at the, the surface, we're the facilitator, you know, the parks are the city-owned asset. We also have the programming professionals that can lend to the development and, and the implementation of the programs. I think the partnerships are critical and we already work closely with the school district, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and 180. So it's just really, you know, we take the lead as far as facilitating it and then they help work with supplementing volunteers. And then the marketing's the key or the big effort is just getting the word out and get those kids interested and signed up. So it's really a multi-tiered collaborative effort.
And then with the bike paths, I hear complaints from all sides of that of how people who are in there walking, they hate the bikers because they feel like they're going too fast. And then the bikers hate the people walking because they feel like they shouldn't be on the bike path because it's literally called a bike path. And so you hear it from all sides. So how does, what is the approach there of trying to use the multipurpose trails, what I've come to learn from a city standpoint and not a bike path? But what's the, how do we go about that? And especially now that you have like people on $20,000 road bikes that can easily go 30, 40 and e-bikes that are now going 20, 25, how does that all fit in?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we're getting ready to launch a new campaign and it's really informational about how to properly share the multimodal trails, as you say. And I, I think from the biking aspect, it's really trying to educate them to, you know, get away from the, the idea that it's a bike path, right? It's a multi-use recreational trail for all users. We do have speed limit signs. I mean, it is 15, the e-bike issue is new and that's something, you know, we definitely have concerns about because those things do get up to high speeds, but technically they're not what you would consider a gas-powered motorized vehicle. So, you know, really the education portion, I think we'll look to, for Public Works to also assist in maybe doing some traffic counts and some things like that on the trails. But it's just really trying to get everybody to understand that, you know, that they're shared use. I don't know as far as, you know, enforcement and, and, you know, the police department has a lot of other things they have to tend to, whether or not being out on our trails is something, you know, they do assist when we do have issues if they're in the area, so that's great. But it's, and right now, you know, with the extended warmth of the fall and everything with COVID and other things, the trails have just been real busy in general.
So then last one is with COVID. I know a lot of people are fearful of what the winter might have in store because we can't be outside as much as we were. But that's where I think we have a great opportunity here of, could we get like Vandevere back up and going as our premier ice skating arena outdoor and in addition to, if not maybe in replacement of getting like outdoor ice rinks up in general? I know we talked previously about trying to see if we could get one in like Lindsey Park or something like that, but anywhere I think it'd be nice, the more outdoor ice rinks we could get this winter, if possible, it might be too soon already, but, or too quick of a turnaround. But I think that would be something that would be really beneficial with the COVID.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea. It's not, it's not a real challenge to create outdoor ice. The issue is obviously the freeze temps. We, we've always offered outdoor, the lagoon skating at Vandevere, it's just whether or not it freezes solidly enough to allow the ice. But if we get a cold winter, we can certainly look at doing makeshift flooding areas, ball fields, things like that. Those are real easy to do for, whether it's Lindsey Park or Fegiverry or anywhere else that we want to offer, Credit Island, you know.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I think we all just heard Chad say he's rooting for a minus 30-degree. Thanks, Chad.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Dunham.
Just one quick question. What's the chances of mowing the February Hill?
Mowing it?
Yeah. I mean, we keep calling it natives, but natives are weeds.
Yeah.
We keep protecting the black hills.
Well, we, yeah, we can get that knocked down. So what we've done, especially like with Prospect Terrace and Riverview Terrace, is we've outsourced to have, they bring in a brush hog and knock it down, so we can certainly do that as well.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, I just want to say thanks and then emphasize a little bit. Yeah, Alderman Grip?
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so Chad, I just wanted to say that I think that inclusive play has been a big win the last few years and I encourage you to continue to look for inclusive projects that we can put into our parks and continue to be the leader in inclusive play in the area. I also think that the, the big successes that we've had, aside from the Miracle Field and Gabe's, have been kind of small, small successes that people have really enjoyed, the Holiday Lights at Fegiverry, the Holiday Lights at Vandevere. And I think you can make a big impact in the tens of thousands of dollars and I would just encourage you to keep looking for those singles and doubles. And then also, obviously, I'm a big proponent of parks. Parks are for everyone. They are an equitable city asset because you can use them no matter how much money you have or you don't have. They're accessible and free to everyone. So obviously, I still think we need to continue to put the money towards our signature parks and our riverfront parks. But really, we can make a big headway in the city by being really effective with our smaller projects. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add quick, thanks for your work in keeping our parks. Add one thing, that, that information on shared, I know we've talked a lot about that, that's lately, that is a humongous issue. I see it consistently. So I'll ask you to quickly, as best as you can, do that. And then, as I grew up here and many people did, you know, the winter activities here used to be a big deal. The snow sledding down February and Duck Creek and all that. And I know we've kind of went away a little bit, but I think that's a big deal. And then, of course, it used, we used to have ice skating races at Vandevere and other places. So Vandevere's a huge thing. And then, of course, if we do that, the heating shed, I know is always a talk every year, I'd really like to see that get fixed up. So thank you for your work. I guess that's all. Seeing no one else, very good. Finance, Ms. Mallory. Merritt, please.
In finance, we really have five key divisions. Linda Follen is our Assistant Finance Director. She oversees accounting. Jim O'Dean is our other Assistant Finance Director. He oversees revenue and all of our revenue collections as a city. Megan Murray, which many of you know, she is our budget analyst and works really hard to prepare our annual budget for you. Jim Forsythe is our risk manager. And then Chris Keller oversees our purchasing area. Our budget is here for you to review. There's not much change there. There was one decrease in an FTE, which was just moved to another area. So our core services in administration, really, the role of our admin division is to prepare the annual budget. The issuance of debt, compliance, and then the oversight of the annual audit. Accounting actually transacts the audit with the auditor. They do all of the preparation for that. Also, accounts payable and payroll is run out of accounting. It's not on here, but another big thing that they do is all of our grants management. So many grants that we have, actually all of the grants that we have require a significant amount of reporting to whichever granting agency is out there. And they, they make sure that all of that is ticked and tied and do a great job at that. And I think that's one of the reasons that we end up being successful with many of our agencies is because they know that we're going to spend the money how we say that we are and we report on it well. Our revenue, they bill and collect our revenues and also maintain our investment portfolio. Purchasing, that one's pretty straightforward. All of the procurement for the city, RFPs, bids. And then risk, this area really focuses on workers' comp, securing all of the different insurance policies that we need, and then just making sure that we're protected. The FAQ's here, so where can information be found about the budget process? We have lots of information out on the website. Every year, we post our annual operating budget, the approved budget. We also post videos to all of the workshops, we post the packets to the workshops. Megan prepares a monthly financial update that gets sent to all of you, that's also posted out there. So as your constituents have questions about our finances, I would just point them to the budget information tab on the website because there is plenty of material there. The state backfill, I think we're all pretty much familiar with that at this point, but we do receive $3 million from the state of Iowa annually as part of our backfill payment. How does my company get on a bidders list for bid notifications? So we get this question quite a bit. We, everything that we do is electronic, so you have to register your business with our e-bidding system. And then you'll get notifications anytime that a bid goes out that's in your industry. The city broke my blink. Are we going to pay for that? The question really there is it depends. If it's internal, so sometimes we even get this question from our own employees of, you know, something broke, can, can we get risk to pay for that? If it was damaged because of an accident or a storm, then the risk fund will pay for that internally. Externally, as you see there, we will only pay for damage where we were at fault. And then we have a lot of partners in finance and you may not, not always think that, but Quad City Bank and Trust is our primary bank. That is where we hold the majority of our funds. Municipal Collections of America, that's our collections agency. Redflex manages all of our red light and speed camera tickets. Dorsey and Whitney is our bond counsel, so as our bond resolutions come forward to you, those will look a little bit different than your typical staff-prepared resolutions and they actually prepare that. So that's just why you see that attached to the green sheet sometimes. Ida Bailey is our auditing firm. They're actually new to us this year, so accounting's doing a great job onboarding them and working through that initial first year with an auditing firm, which, which can be interesting because they want to, to learn as much about you as they possibly can. And then PFM is our financial advisor. And then I think Cory was going to talk about the work plan updates.
Am I doing both?
Yeah.
Okay. So Visit Quad Cities, this kind of came on the tail of previous council actions. We had our first professional service agreement with Quad City First. That has since been dissolved and absorbed by the chamber, but that work plan goes with it. With Dave Harrell coming on, Visit Quad Cities rebranded and they recently went under a tourism master plan, which has recently been completed. So we decided it wasn't the right time to bring forward a service agreement with an organization that was really defining its mission. And then COVID hit and now it's really defining its mission. So I would say this one's probably still at least a year out before we can have any meaningful conversation on this, to make sure that there's equity and understanding amongst both the governments, who are the hotel motel kind of partnership of the funding, but as well as the hoteliers and all the destination partners that we have with Visit Quad Cities. It's functioning great. I think we have a lot more transparency than we've had with this organization in the past. So I wouldn't say this item's urgent by any means. It's more of just kind of cleaning up some of our relationships with those organizations. And then the DDP operational agreement, the council approved this. We've been into our first now, what, four months of the agreement with DDP kind of providing that enhanced service downtown. So the trash pickup's a little more frequent, you see the staff out and about a little more often. And I think Nicole, at least from my perspective, so far, so good on that one.
All right, questions? Alderman Peacock.
Thank you. I don't know if this question's for Mallory or Cory, but where do we stand with a CFO?
So Mallory is legally and technically the CFO. As far as the succession plan with those positions, I will be talking with you all about that in the coming months.
So she's, so who's the HR manager?
She's both right now.
Anyone else? Mallory, thank you for your work and HR, HR's coming.
Yep.
In finance, we had a good meeting Thursday, so that's, that's good and way to keep up on all the stuff we're doing. I like how you push out information rather than we beg you for it. So thank you for that. So transitioning, I guess, to HR.
Yep. All right, so in HR, Christina Murphy is our Assistant HR Director. She runs most of our drug and alcohol screening, FMLAs, long-term disabilities, those types of things. Ally Zirker is our benefits manager. Courtney Jones oversees our recruitments for the most part. And then Scott is our talent and inclusion administrator. He runs our police department recruitments and then does a lot of training for us. The budget here, really no changes. All right, so our core services, these can really be broken down into these four areas. The first is recruitment. We administer many, many recruitments in a given year. There were 46 civil service recruitments. And for a civil service recruitment, that has a minimum of two components always, so two, two testing components. So when you think about 46 recruitments, we likely gave over 100 tests of some sort connected to those recruitments. And again, those are just for our civil service positions. Benefits administration, we administer many benefits to our employees, our health plan, our prescription plan, our 457s, our RHSP accounts, so lots of benefits. And Ally does a great job with those. Collective bargaining, we have six union groups that we are responsible for as a city. We negotiate with them as those contracts become open. Also, related to our unions, there's a lot of work that goes into managing those relationships on a year-round basis. We have monthly union management meetings with all management meetings with all of those groups. And then we routinely work on side letters. So you might approve a contract that's for four years, but lots of things happen kind of in between there. So we're always adding side letters to the back to address needs that we have. And I think, you know, Mayor, you were a part of the one for COVID. So that's a good example of COVID required us to change and adjust some things in our contract. And that's why side letters are good. And that's also why having positive working relationships with our unions all the time is very important to us. And then lastly, training. I would say one of the, the key challenges and one of the key opportunities in this, this current team of HR is really our focus on talent development and growing our own talent. So I know that you'll hear Cory talk about that from time to time. And that's something that we are really starting to shift and to focus on in preparing really, I think, our mid-level management team to be successful supervisors. That's something that's really important to us as an organization. All right. So how do we hire new employees? Hiring as a government and as a municipality is much different than hiring in the private sector. We first have to determine the classification of that position. We have to figure out, does it belong in a union? Is it already part of a union? And is it civil service? And if the question, if the answer to any of those questions is yes, then there are, there's kind of a certain set of rules that we have to follow. For non-civil service, we can run those recruitments kind of on our own. For civil service recruitments, we have to abide by the state statute and the local rules and regulations of our commission. So just an example of that is, you know, if we are establishing a new position and it's determined that it's civil service, before we can even post the position and start receiving applications, we take that job to civil service and we establish the qualifications. That's, that's a function of civil service. So what is the role of civil service? They really guide the HR department in, in creating those certification lists. So they approve all of the testing processes that we are going to use. They approve the weighting. So if we're going to have four components to a testing process, they're going to approve how, how much is each section worth? And then their, their primary function really for us is also establishing those minimum job qualifications. All right. Do, does the city at Davenport random drug and alcohol test all of our employees? The answer to that is no, not all of our employees. So we're mandated by the DOT and the FTA to random drug and alcohol test Teamster and Transit employees who are in safety sensitive positions, which most of them are. So we have a partnership with Genesis. They help us figure out, you know, who we're testing and all of that. So Christina does, does manage that for us. But then all of our employees are subject to reasonable suspicion testing. All right. Why do we invest in stop-loss insurance? So once a year, usually in the late fall, you will see a council agenda item that's either titled stop-loss insurance or reinsurance. We are required by the state to have this. It's just a second layer of protection for us against high claims. So the stop-loss spec that we have right now is, is 190,000. One of the big changes in this last time is that we actually started to include prescription claims into that also. One of the largest challenges with our health insurance plan right now that, that not only we're facing, but it's, the nation is facing, is the increased cost of prescriptions. So that was a really good move to be able to include that in that reinsurance. And we're seeing the benefits of that. So partnerships here, UMR and Script Care, they are our third-party administrators for both our health and prescription plans. Unum is our life insurance provider. ICMA RC and Morgan Stanley are two of our 457 providers, arbitrators. So from time to time, if we cannot settle a grievance with a union, we do have a procedure where we can go before an arbitrator and an arbitrator will settle that dispute for us. And then our Civil Service Commission, which we've talked quite a bit about. So again, we appreciate the partnerships with all of these and couldn't do our work in HR without them. And then just a quick work plan update here. Bargaining Unit Negotiations, we've talked a little bit about this. We currently have four open contracts that we are getting ready to gear up negotiations with. They're in the process of recertifying with the state. Our Benefits Consultant, RFP, we brought this forward to you for approval, I think about, about a month ago. So looking forward to, to working with Assured Partners on some long-term kind of cost-saving areas within our health plan. And then our Occupational Health Provider, RFP. We are getting ready to release that. It's either on the street or it will be here soon. That's a partnership with our Risk Division and looking forward to that, too.
Very good. Any questions? Alderman Jobson.
Mallory, speaking of recruitment here, we recently had candidates going through recruitment for police, police department. What information can we give out to the public to say we had X amount of candidates, here are their demographics, and when can that be published?
Yeah, we have that information right now. I know we've been sharing it with our city administrator and with the mayor along the way. I would probably wait until we get to the end when we have kind of the final statistics. And when we take that forward to civil service, that becomes, at that time, we share that with them at the meeting. They'll get to see the full breakdown. And so that, that will be shared as part of that public meeting.
Can estimate that to be when?
That should be the November Commission Meeting.
Okay. Alderman Dohm.
Thank you. So I'm gonna miss it, but do you know or what percentage of city employees are a part of some sort of bargaining unit?
I can get you that specific number. Yep.
Yeah, that just always fascinated me to know how many are, are in some sort of bargaining unit.
Yeah, by far the majority.
Um, do we ever so, at work right now, John Deere, the other job, we're going through a whole structural change where our entire organization's being shaken up and we're rethinking the way the business should be ran. Have you guys ever hired a consultant or really tried to challenge the way the city is structured to see if there's layers we could remove, if we could empower, empower lower-level employees, really find different ways to run our business, even though we're not a business, we are a business, in order, in a real effort of, one, empowering people, which is a new trend that our generation wants. But then also, it would be a cost-cutting measure if we could have less middle management and more maybe worker bees or things like that.
So I'll cover that in two parts. As far as the, kind of the cost-cutting, for more than a decade, the city cut positions. So we, we have nothing left to cut. And you will hear that at every budget work session. So it's more than 100 positions were cut over the course of a decade. As far as empowerment, again, much of what we do is governed by regulators of all sorts. But if you looked back at the organization really through the last five years, it looks very different. Nicole reorgs Public Works with frequency. Parks underwent a pretty big reorg before Chad's time here. Mallory has reorged both HR and Finance. I reorged Admin. I would say we are about as efficient of a government organization as you will find in our size of bracket.
And I would just challenge you guys that I promised you John Deere said that a year ago, too. And we hired a consulting firm that really challenged us to show this new operating structure and model. And I'm sure the same group that did it for John Deere probably won't be good for the city because it is so vastly different. But there, I feel like there's got to be someone out there that is specialized in that, that I think it would be worthwhile to even maybe challenge yourself to rethink how we're thinking about things.
There are firms that do it. And so what, three years ago, we brought in a public safety firm to do police and fire and do exactly that. I would remind you, we are a service-based organization and our motivation is never profit. So for us, it's about doing the right thing most efficiently, but with effective. And so from the staff standpoint, I'm confident that any consultant you could find me won't show us anything we haven't looked at already. But, and we constantly do it through every service innovation we have. But I would remind you, our, our motivation at the end of the day is not profit. It's about the benefit to our community.
And tax dollars.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, because of Cory putting this incredible team together and Mallory, you always do an incredible job. You, you two have a great team put together. Now, I'd be very reluctant to have you step back many of your chores. You know, Davenport is because of Cory, her leadership. You know, this is why Davenport's America's greatest city. And I think Cory, you summed it, you summed it up perfectly. Now, Team Davenport, you can't find a better city in this country than Davenport. You know, so many great things. And I'm so proud of where Davenport is now. I just, you know, I want to continue to push forward. And, you know, we got some real challenges in the community. And, you know, those challenges are going to be there into the future. And I know we're going to be able to address it because we're a can-do city. So, yeah, I'm so thankful we have Cory as administrator. She has a team with Mallory doing some incredible work. So thanks.
Very good. Anyone else? So again, Mallory, thank you for your work in this particular department. And I, Ms. Spiegel, of course, I've said it before publicly here, as an Alderman for 12 years, and then witnessing a day-to-day thing since I've been mayor of, of the pandemic and the COVID and the response from all the staff. And I know we're not done with all the staff right now, but just opportune time to say, I've witnessed their can-do problem solving. How can I help? What can I do? Attitude by so many different folks. And I'm very proud of what they do. So Mr. Smith, please. IT.
Yes, Cory Smith, IT Director. So you know me, of course. Ron Perkins actually is over our infrastructure. So that's anything building-related connectivity, phones, towers, that kind of stuff. You may occasionally see him on road projects, too. Brett Berta is over our systems. He, this is the data center that we have at SEC, the Help Desk, most of the PC-related equipment, laptops, that kind of stuff. Budget stayed pretty much the same. We did add a position for the Systems and Security Engineer. Call back. Of course, Services, IT Support. So we are a service center within the Service Center. We serve all of the departments. Any IT-related issues that they're having, we address those in a ticketing system, the Help Desk. So just under 4,000 tickets a year, so quite a few. Systems and Security is another core service, securing both the, the internal and the external access to our, our systems, web, websites, email. This also includes the, you know, file servers for both police and fire, sensitive data, lot of certifications related to like HIPAA, PCI compliances, those kind of things. We also help with Kalia for PD, Parks and Recs, anyone who's doing some type of compliance, we're involved in that process. We also do application integration and development. So this is something that's diminished over the years on the, the actual software development side of it. But we do a lot of integrations. Most of our software applications are, are owned by their departments. A lot of them are SaaS-based. These are software as a service like Cartograph, where we help them integrate that with other systems for reporting and ease of use. We also do some development in-house for software applications. We also maintain the communication towers and fiber throughout the city. We have hundreds of miles of fiber within the city. We've partnered with Parks and, with Public Works on these road projects. And anytime they're digging something, or we're having them put conduit in for us, so we can pull fiber through it later on. So. Does the city provide fiber access for residents? No, we do not do that. That has been a discussion in the past, but we do not do it. There are, there are carriers that do that. There are ISPs out there. And then what do you do with video from the city cameras? The departments individually use that video. Public Works, for example, has a number of cameras up throughout the city that we use for their snow desk to, just to, you know, maintain and monitor road conditions. Police also use some cameras throughout the city. We have a lot of DVRs within, most facilities have a DVR of some sort. Fire stations very common, especially on the, the approach and the exit of the fire trucks, just in case there's ever a, an issue in the street. Let's see. Does the city provide information on underground utility locations? This is a lot, we get this question a lot. We do not. And we do not provide information on where the city's fiber is located because it's got public safety data on it. That's not something that we would release. And we, we refer them over to the private utility provider who's, you know, using that product. So partnerships. So we have an internal partnership with all of the departments, and that is in the form of a steering committee. We meet monthly and we go over what was going on in IT and also what's going on in the individual departments. We find a lot of overlap in, in IT-related issues and/or infrastructure that could help other departments that they may not know about. So this is a good time for collaboration with some of the key departments. Service providers, we partner with a lot of them in town. Obviously, you know, MetroNet, MediaCom, and CenturyLink. It's, we have some locations that we don't have direct access to, so we utilize them as services. And we do get a lot of questions related to, you know, connectivity in town. SEC is a big partner with us. Obviously, our data center is located at their facility. And also, the CAD system and everything that we integrate in all the squad cars and fire trucks. So that's a very important one for us. A newer one for us also is the Scott County Recycling Center. We've gone through and rather, we taking and taking a special effort to make sure that our e-waste is done appropriately. The equipment is decommissioned properly. The data on the drives are destroyed. And then the, you know, the assets are reused properly. So. Work Plan Updates, Cybersecurity enhancements. This started with the hiring of the Systems and Security Engineer. And since then, we have implemented several additional security measures. We've increased this security awareness with training, which I'm sure you're aware of. And so thank you for doing those. And it has drastically helped. We're actually much further above the curve than the industry as far as our users being very aware and security-conscious. We've also made some additions to password policies, how we reset policies, retention times for those. And we have a number of other things that we're going to be implementing here soon as well. COVID-19, that kind of changed how we, we do access. So, you know, with a lot of remote workers, having the availability of people to kind of work wherever, it was a kind of a native function of our existing system that we've been working on for a long time. So it was an easier transition for us. But also with the use of, you know, virtual conference rooms and all of that, it, we spent a lot of effort and work in trying to figure out and make sure those work well, which a lot of you are very familiar with. So we appreciate that. So.
Very good. Questions, anyone? Alderman Jobson.
Cory, I just want to give you a quick thanks and shout out. I mean, as you mentioned, you know, dealing with the virtual response for COVID- I mean, as you mentioned, you know, dealing with the virtual response for COVID-19, you know, as being a member of the council that's, you know, had to log in through GoToMeetings and all this and still be able to be connected and, you know, be able to work with colleagues throughout all of this has been a great testament to you and your department. So thank you. Also, with help for, you know, award meetings, be able to conduct virtual award meetings and stay in contact with constituents, that's been great. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you. Have we had any direct or targeted cyber attacks? Or are they all just kind of passive where people are scanning the internet trying to get in?
Yeah, so the vast majority of ours are passive. We have a lot of hits on our, you know, firewalls regularly. We've been able to do some geo-fencing where we basically can cut communications to known areas that are having issues. So that's one thing that we've added with the new firewalls that we have now. We have not had any major, you know, related issues to, you know, malware or ransomware. Several years ago, we had some very minor incidences of that where we had one start and immediately stopped through virus protection. We have multiple areas that we target those for inspection. We have a system that runs on our file server that actually actively seeks to check for files being encrypted actively. As soon as that, it notifies a files being encrypted, it actually stops it, and we get alerts on it. We implemented a newer AI-based virus protection by a company called Sophos that's worked extremely well. So that and some hardware changes and then just best practices, that's been the biggest thing. The best thing that we can do is educate our users, you know, because that's where our real security is going to be, is going to be better, so.
So then, kind of going into the next one there, both on the defense side, but then also the asset side of being beneficial to us with the technology curve being so sharp and it's so hard to keep up on whatever the newest technology is. How, what is your, our strategy for staying on top of new technology? And what can we do to help?
Well, I mean, I'm a student of the industry, obviously, and I have a kind of a deep love for it. So I'm as much of a geek as you're probably going to find. So I stay active in that side of it. I know a lot of people in the industry itself, too, so that helps. But we are very much on the leading edge of where most of the local agencies are by far. So that kind of helps. I think the biggest thing is to stay connected to the certifications that we are, the compliances that we're following, because most of those have a very good blueprint of what we're supposed to be doing, how we're supposed to be doing it. We did an audit a number of years ago, an IT-related audit. So we'll end up doing another one of those, probably, or a external intrusion test where we'll pay somebody to try to break in and with some social engineering side of that, too. So that's how you stay ahead of it. We want to make sure we're attacking the low-hanging fruit and we're allowing us to be, you know, somewhere higher than the next local agency who's not doing as well so that they get attacked and not us. But we have a very low exterior footprint, too. We're not selling anything on the internet. You know, we don't have a profit center that kind of, those things are more attacked and more prone to attack than our systems, so.
And then last question, and it might be for Chad, but it's also up your alley. But have we ever explored trying to expand Wi-Fi into like our parks to make them like outdoor learning spaces or to just be outdoor activity spaces where people can like Pokemon Go and all those things that they love to do at Band of Year? And I also don't know if I actually want that because I want people to actually talk in parks and not play Pokemon Go 24/7, but I'm just wondering if we ever thought about that?
It has been discussed many times. I think if it's going to be done, we should probably look at a partner. Maybe one of the local ISPs would be willing to put something like that in a park. The biggest issue has been connectivity, you know, and keeping that traffic secure from the rest of our traffic. But yeah, I think a possible local partnership would be better for that.
Yeah, that could be interesting if it's Wi-Fi brought to you by Metronet.
There you go. Sounds great.
Thanks, Cory.
Yep.
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted, I don't think people maybe understand how important and revolutionary your recycling center is for IT equipment. That is wonderful. So thank you for starting that up. They do a great job. Could you please explain the relationship that the city has with Metronet? How that partnership came about? What that partnership is?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
So I will abbreviate what was a very long history for those who were on council. At one point, the city was looking at a city-owned or a municipal fiber network, which would have cost us $90 million. We made the decision with the direction of council to not proceed and go in a direction where we would bring in basically competition in the marketplace because that was the challenge we were facing. Metronet had come to us many years earlier, I think when we were still in the phase of looking at municipal-owned network. We do not have a, I would say, business relationship with them other than we have an economic development agreement with them where we forego future revenues as part of their expansion into the, both us and Bentonorf, we, both cities signed an identical agreement at a joint council meeting. And that agreement allowed us to reach into parts of the community that might not otherwise be served. So we got a much bigger coverage area through that agreement with them.
Okay, so there's no formal relation, because, you know, poor Nicole, we get a lot of questions about somebody dug up my yard and made a mess. And so I'm trying to make sure I understand what the relationship is between the city and Metronet and how it relates to our response to those kinds of questions.
So when Alderman Hopkins was still on council, Geneseo was building out in Oakbrook, same exact issues. Alderman Justin at the time had those issues in the sixth ward in the village. So any ISP can do this. So we have issues with certain ones in our right-of-way, like Windstream or MediaCom or there's a whole cadre of telecommunications companies that are allowed to go into people's yards and that kind of thing. It's the city, we have an obligation through our right-of-way agreement to manage that, but that's really the extent of our business relationship.
So it's more right-of-way than agreement with the company itself?
Our jurisdiction comes in managing the right-of-way. We have the power to make them restore it, but that's true of MediaCom or any other provider in the community.
Okay. Another question. The video that we are voting on on Wednesday at Locust and Harrison and Centennial, and it goes back to what you said earlier, Cory, about the collecting of that data. How is the city balancing privacy issues with safety issues, let's say, or law enforcement issue, whatever they are? How are we balancing privacy?
Yeah, so that proposal is for LPR. So what it's capturing is a license plate versus, you know, full-on video of all the cars moving through that. There is a general video camera at the intersection, but the collecting of the LPR data is what that is part of.
But you're also talking about other cameras throughout the city, like in Washington or whatever. How are we balancing the privacy issue?
Good question. Well, I know that when there is a request for that video, that's properly vetted internally before it's released, so you have that. I know that from my experience with PD, these are extremely helpful for them when they do catch a situation that happens. The advancement of this system, I think, can help, especially for the stolen vehicle option, because it's more directly with LPR-type traffic. You know, I mean, that's more of a PD use than it is an IT-related thing. The reason why it was on my agenda was I evaluated the technology and tried to provide something that is the best that I can provide for the money that is provided, yeah.
So the one thing I would add to what Cory said is it's important to understand that city-owned cameras only deploy in public areas, so the public roadway, the public building, much like we have City Code to protect private residents. Like, I can't have my private cameras completely on my neighbor's house. We have protections. I would kind of remind everyone that the public cameras are only gathering what I would consider critical information. None of us sit around and watch this. I hate to break it to anybody. We are far too busy for that. It's only gathering information that is in the public domain, no different than if I sat there with my cellphone and Facebook Live'd it, same kind of principle.
Is this a beginning of a further deployment of those types of cameras?
Counsel several years ago. When did you guys go to Dubuque? Probably three years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. The idea focusing on the major arterials and kind of those connection points, but again, only in the public right-of-way.
Okay. And then the other thing is I first used the virtual to call in in, I believe, February. I did it again in March when I was ill, and you've really improved it a lot since then. But one place that we really need some improvement is when we have our meetings in the community room with the Davenport Police Department. If you're calling in, you know, and that's why I checked on Marion last time, because we all have a responsibility to speak louder.
Sure.
For one, but what can we do to improve?
Yeah, so actually, right now, we're able to get a grant, a partial grant through the, to upgrade the AV system in that room. So we're in the process right now of bidding that out, so, for the hardware. So that will come soon. Yep.
Thank you.
It has been a target one, as well as several other locations. It's just, you know, time and money.
Oh, yeah. And COVID has caught us off guard, too. Sure. Okay, great. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Alderman Condon.
File someplace under other duties assigned is probably putting up with councilmen. So I just wanted to take this chance to apologize for all the times that I forgot my password and couldn't figure out that FISH training.
Yeah. No worries.
Guilty, so, yes. Anyone else before I allow Alderman Dorman another shot at the apple? Very good.
This is Marion. I have a question.
Alderman McGinnis, please.
Thank you. Yes, and Cory, you may not be the appropriate person to answer this question, but since we were talking about cameras and their use, there was an email that many of us received from someone, and it was asking who else would we share data with? And Administrator Spiegel, you may be the person to answer this question. Would the city be in a role of sharing videos with any other entity? I'm talking about the cameras in the public right-of-way.
Marion, this is Administrator Cory. I would say the only entity would be tied to law enforcement, likely the judicial system as a case is being adjudicated, but in that case, it would still be the police department.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, good. Alderman Dorman, one more question.
A quick one here, but first off, that was painful to realize how many of you guys don't know how to use technology here, so that was, well, I only. But my question is Judith sparked it here. After Metronet comes into town, will 100% of Davenport be fiber-optic-enabled or accessible?
I'd have to go back and look at the EDA. I think it's around 94%, 95%. There were specific things that were called out, like residents per kind of square mile. Like, if you're three miles out of the city, there were specific things that were called out that were exceptions.
So like, in the still kind of like farming areas, but they're still Davenport proper and stuff like that? Could we maybe just see who the 5% are and to make sure it's not our desperately needed areas that really need it?
I believe we have a map on that of what, yeah, so it's all, basically, all of the major residential areas are definitely going to get it. So there will be some that, as far out as, I know Wisconsin has it, so, I mean, that's out there. It's not way out there, but it's on the edge of town, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Alderman Dorn, done, sorry.
Just wanted to remind my colleague that I could figure out the building code permits.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'll just add a quick comment. Mr. Smith, my longtime of the council, I love all our departments, and all our departments do wonderful work, but my simple experience is the improvement in the IT's part and your department or the overall health of technology in our city since you have come on has really improved, and it's kind of a gold star, so I thank you very much for your work. So seeing no one else, administration. Ms. Ott, please.
All right. So in addition to Cory and myself, you have likely seen Tiffany and Samantha. They provide you guys with administrative support for all of council and for administration. And Brian Crupp is the deputy city clerk, which you also see him quite frequently on Wednesdays. So nothing really important to call out in the budget here, so we'll move on to the core services of administration. Support of our elected officials, primarily administrative support that Tiffany and Samantha provide to you all, is one of our core services upstairs. Communications, this is a core service of administration, but is unique in the fact that while we have two full-time staff that work in communications and administration, we have built a team that is disseminated across the entire city organization. And we have folks that are in individual departments that are a part, that are embedded in those departments, but also serve on our communications team. So while it's a primary function of administration, the responsibility is also disseminated across all of our departments as well. Responsibility for the oversight and progress of the city administrators' work plan, again, administration is not the sole department that is carrying out all of the goals of the work plan, but rather those are disseminated for responsibility across all of our departments. But the oversight and progress, and then ultimately the communication back to you all as the elected body, is a function of city administration. Agenda preparation, so the preparation and dissemination of all the agendas and minutes for public meetings. Brian Crupp, our deputy city clerk, does that. Special event coordination, Brian also oversees that as well and serves as a central point of contact for the special event application process. We, again, have a matrix team for that process as well that pulls in Public Works and Parks, Fire and PD for that review, but Brian serves as the central point of contact for all special events. And then records management and codification, so the deputy city clerk is also responsible for the retention of city records and the codification of city code. So a few questions that come up quite frequently. How can I know what will be discussed at the city council meeting? So agendas of all city, or of all public meetings are posted at least 24 hours in advance of their meeting. City council meeting agendas are typically posted on the Friday before the Wednesday meeting, so we give even more time for city council meetings. City council meetings are also streamed live on the city's website. I want to have a special event. Do I need to apply with the city? So there are certain things that trigger the need to apply for a special event, whether that's the closure of a street, use of city property, or a plan to exceed the noise ordinance. If any of those apply to the special event, they will need to apply through our process, but if not, then it likely does. but if not, then it likely doesn't trigger our need for review. Um, the electronic application is available online and all the review is also done electronically. Okay, so how can I contact my alderman about blank problem? So again, Tiffany and Samantha, um, upstairs, provide a lot of administrative support for you all, including answering phone calls from your constituents. So for routine work order requests, they have the ability to, or, um, to enter those straight into our Cartograph System and staff is able to take care of those. Um, and ultimately, you often don't need to get involved in those. Um, for non-routine requests, they're able to route the issue to the appropriate staff and bring that staff together, um, for meetings, um, with the constituent or with you or with the appropriate staff to ultimately come to a solution on those issues. So a couple of partnerships for you guys. Mindfire Communications is, um, a strategic communications consultant that we have, um, partnered with over the past year as we've gotten our communications team up and running. They have provided us, um, with a strategic social media plan as well as a public relations plan that we then have taken as staff and as our team and begun to implement. Um, the Figgy and Putnam Museums, you guys provide annual support for these cultural amenities, um, with agreements, um, that is funded annually through the budget. Animal Control, this is a contractual agreement that we have with the Humane Society and they provide all animal control services for the city. By State Regional Commission, they facilitate intergovernmental meetings and partnerships. And then the Chamber of Commerce and Visit Quad Cities, as Cory talked to, talked about, um, a little while ago with Visit Quad Cities, um, they're regional partner organizations and they help push forward regional efforts that you see in our communities, such as Q2030. So a couple of work plan updates for you guys. The redefined communication strategy, as I talked about a moment ago. Um, we have implemented a social media strategy plan over the past year along with a public relations strategy plan. Um, we also created specific messaging campaigns to better create, um, community awareness around specific topics. Um, the one that you have probably seen the most of is Brad and Gia of our Better Roads Ahead campaign that we utilized this year because we had a lot of construction going on in our community. Uh, we also worked proactively, um, on flood messaging and thankfully, we did not need to utilize that this year. Um, but that is something that we also spent a significant amount of time, um, probably late winter, early spring, preparing for in case we needed it. And then Census 2020 implementation. Um, we worked in conjunction with Marion and the Complete Count Committee, um, to ensure an accurate and complete count of Davenport residents and we are excited that this has been completed. Yes, right, Marion? And that is all for us.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ott or Ms. Spiegel in administration? Ms., Alderman Lee?
Thank you very much. Are the green sheets available to council? They are? Yeah. How, how do we get those? So we know what's coming up?
So if you click on the link that's sent out every Friday, that takes you to a long-form agenda and you can see all of the green sheets there.
Oh, is that what those are? Because that, okay.
Yep.
So it's just a connection?
Yep.
Stupid question. Okay. Another question.
They're called green just because that was the color of the paper.
The original, yeah, okay.
20 years ago.
Sorry, agenda items.
Okay.
Not necessarily green sheets, sorry.
Another question that, that I, I brought up, uh, when COVID was, was just starting to get ramped up and we needed to get information out, is, uh, translation into other languages of some of that information, as well as closed captioning? And maybe you already have it on some of the videos. But how, how are we doing on getting, um, translation into other languages for stuff that would be important for them? Like small business information or COVID information that?
So on social media, um, all of the videos that we put out end up with, um, closed captioning. So we do get all of the closed captioning on the videos that we put on social media. Um, oftentimes, the internet, using Google Translate is usually what people use when they're, um, utilizing information from our site. So we're not actively translating that, but their, their search page or their browser will do that as well.
I would say on some of the, where we've created maybe more flyer-type things, think back to transit when we were doing that optimization or some of the CDBG things, uh, we will have those translated into second or third languages.
Okay, good, thank you. And one other question, and Tom, you got here just in time. I am concerned, you know, you, you said the public comment is all, I mean, the meetings are all streamed, but for city council and committee, the whole, uh, it is not live-streamed until the next day. And I've, I've talked to you about this and I'm, I'm concerned. Um, what I've found is what happens is it just goes into pause. The, and everything goes blank. It doesn't say, from here on out, the public comment will be available the next day. Uh, it just goes into fuzzy pause, okay? With no information on what's happening. I don't necessarily support that the public comment not being live-streamed, but if it's not going to be live-streamed, I think there needs to be some kind of notification at that point on what's happening and that it can be viewed the next day. Is that possible?
Yeah, we would have to look into that to see if we're able to put anything over that. That's a function of the system. I'm not sure I have the answer to that right now.
Because it literally, you, you think something happened to your computer.
Yeah.
There's no way to know that it was planned.
So you don't know the meeting's going to continue necessarily?
Right. No, it just goes into pause and fuzz.
Sure.
Yeah. So I think it's important we address that if we're going to continue not live-streaming the public comment.
Good idea.
But I do support live-streaming the public comment. Okay, thank you.
There, there's problems with that.
Well, I understand, but. But still, it's part of the meeting.
Okay. Is that, are you good?
I'm done.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you. Uh, one thing I will say is, uh, when Spiegel came on and others, and as Sarah has transitioned to the strategic officer job, uh, we continue to tra, to challenge on the communication side and that continues to evolve and I appreciate that. And, um, that's probably always the one struggle that everybody has, no matter where, but it's so much improved and, uh, I appreciate you continuing to work on that. Okay? Next is legal then. Mr. Warner, please.
Okay, uh, the leadership of the legal department, that's just about, no, that is all of us. There's me. Uh, I have, uh, we have an administrative assistant, Tina. She just started, uh, a little bit ago. Uh, Brian Hires, the Assistant Corporation Counsel, and Mallory Hoyt is the Senior Staff Attorney. Our budget has remained basically the same, uh, if you look at the FTE line, uh, for a long time. Uh, since 2000, I want to say seven, we've had three attorneys and one support staff. Uh, I will tell you that that is, uh, that's the right number. Uh, if someone comes someday to you all, 10 years from now, and says they need another attorney, uh, they do not, okay? So, so remember that. The, the, and we have a 1.25 there. The 0.25 is for, uh, intern. Uh, we may start that back up again as Brian and I get closer to retirement. But that will give, uh, the opportunity for some, uh, law school students to come through and work during the summer, get an idea of what it looks like to work at the city of Davenport. And they may be interested as positions open here in the next couple of years. Our core services are consultation, risk management, uh, prosecution of, uh, simple misdemeanors, traffic tickets. Uh, we manage all the litigation, uh, between the city of Davenport and other parties. Uh, we also oversee the administrative hearing process. That includes, uh, you know, dog things, car toes, environmental code violations, uh, evictions from public housing. There's quite, quite a bit there. We also get involved with evaluations of claims that float above the, uh, level of the Risk Division. They'll come and talk to us. And then, uh, really, our other large core service that doesn't appear here is that we just try to make things better. Okay? If you have an obstacle that you're facing, and that's for anyone in the room, an obstacle you're facing or a project you're trying to get done and you need to talk to somebody about it and how to maybe do it differently or, or what can I do or what can't I do? Uh, we're the ones to come talk to you. And we have an open door. Okay, frequently asked questions for us. "I can't afford an attorney, will you represent me?" I actually just had this one today and I had to go through the whole thing. The, the routine usually is, "You're an attorney for the city of Davenport, correct?" "Yes, I'm an attorney for the city of Davenport. I live in Davenport, so you represent me." "No, I don't. I represent the business, the city of Davenport." Um, that happens quite often. Uh, another one that comes up a lot, and, uh, this is actually asking, I'm sure there's lots of people that do not ask us. "Can I place the cremains of a loved one in the Vandavere Rose Garden?" Okay? Uh, so I have a feeling that's occurring, uh, quite often. And that's a tough conversation to have with the person. We try to be nice and friendly about it, but at the end of the day, we have to tell them, "No. It's technically a solid waste violation," which is not the, the message you necessarily want to deliver to somebody who's asking that question. Uh, another one is, "I didn't know there would be a snow emergency." So when we go out and write snow emergency tickets, they end up at the legal department, either calling or emailing or coming in. And, uh, you'd be surprised at how many people don't know that it's a snow emergency. Even though it's forecasted on the weather for days in advance, either on TV or through the internet, we put out information. Uh, we have a great system, multi, multimodal system to tell people that it's a snow emergency. Uh, so a lot of times what we've been doing the last few years is trying to teach people how to fish. So if they come in with one of these tickets and tell us, "How was I supposed to know it was going to snow?" Uh, we, pre-COVID, we've actually taken people's phones and signed them up, uh, for the city services, uh, just so we can check one less person off of that. Uh, so, uh, again, we just, uh, we try to, we try to make things better. Partnerships. County Attorney's Office, we talked to them about, uh, a lot of stuff that we have in common, uh, on prosecution or criminal matters. Uh, City Assessor's Office, we are, by state code, the in-house, uh, general counsel for the assessor's office. So we do a lot of work for them. Uh, outside counsel for our high-dollar, high-profile file cases. We've been hiring outside counsel for the last few years. We've been getting excellent results in court. And, uh, we, of course, uh, work with them. Uh, we try to keep the cost down by working closely with them and, and doing some legwork for the, for the outside counsel. Uh, also, I work quite a bit with other Iowa municipal attorneys for the larger cities. We talk about, uh, issues that the bigger cities are having and we try to figure out, um, ways to address them. One of the most recent ones was about six months ago when we determined, hey, we could technically find ourselves in an open, open meetings violation when we start restricting our crowd size for council meetings or public meetings. So, uh, we worked with, uh, the council for the League of Cities and they worked with, uh, Kim Reynolds, our Governor Reynolds, uh, counsel. And, uh, we've got a proclamation, uh, provision that protects all, uh, Iowa cities, uh, in order to keep us from facing litigation for telling someone, "Hey, we reached our capacity, you can't come in." We've never had that happen, but it was a possibility and we were concerned at the time. And that's it.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Mr. Warner? Mr., let's see, Alderman Doorman?
Um, so with snow emergency tickets, do we say someone, they're not just gaming the system and like they, they truly, uh, they were in the hospital with COVID and it snowed and they got a ticket? Uh, do, do we have the capability of like waiving tickets like that at our discretion? Or how does that work?
Yes, we are very reluctant to waive, uh, snow emergency tickets. In that case, we, we're going to require them to bring us hospital records. So, and we, we've done that for other items where we had a gentleman who proved they were in the hospital in Nepal, but that had to do with a speeding ticket.
And then I, I guess, yeah, that was the next level. What, where does that go for our level of waiving tickets versus like you have to go to a traffic court and?
We are the top level for waiving, my office is for waiving traffic tickets. If we decide not to waive it, uh, someone could request a, uh, a trial over at the courthouse. Um, that hasn't happened for years, though. Usually, um, they may not be happy with the result, but they feel like they've been heard.
And then that kind of goes into my next one here and you've already touched on it a little bit, but what is the, are there? Can you define, or is it all ad hoc? What maybe the difference is between, uh, in-house representation of like a court case versus hiring out-of-house and?
Well, it's really high, high-profile, high-dollar. Uh, if we have a, uh, say we get an auto accident case that comes in. If we take a look at it and evaluate it and say, "This is, this is going to be 20,000 or less." We're going to hang on to that case. If we have one that comes in and you can have, you can get an idea by what injuries they're claiming and who's representing them, whether it's going to be a small-dollar case or whether they're going to seek, uh, multimillions for it. If they're going for, for multimillions, we're, we're going to hire trial counsel to represent us.
Is that because you guys don't have the capacity to, or just a risk management standpoint?
It's risk management and they are, trial lawyers are very gifted at persuading you on their version of what happened. So.
And then, um, my last question here is one that I always say this and I've never confirmed if it's true, and so I'm asking now. But whenever someone like complains about how there's no more like sledding at Annie Whitmire or at Fejberi and like other activities like that, I always claim it's because the lawyers got a hold of it and said you can't have fun anymore? Is that, do you, is that in your scope of what you guys do or?
Is it in the scope? I got a great answer for you, okay? So one of the partnerships was, was other attorneys. This was a real problem a few years back where Iowa cities were facing, you know, three, four, five million dollar hits off of sledding cases. So what I did is I worked with them and I drafted a recreational immunity statute for the state that gave us broader immunity. And we worked as a collective to get that to the right people. And so in Iowa, you should be okay now. So we've gotten it to the point where sledding, uh, is okay to do. It's not really a liability issue.
Yeah, that's, I would assume that's why Alderman Dunn wanted to mow it, to bring it back, but, yeah.
Yeah, we had a, we had a suit off of that hill.
Yeah.
Before we got to immunity.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Alderman Lee?
Thank you for a lot of the help you've given me, but I also want to thank you for your willingness to learn a lot about wildlife management and biology.
Yeah.
It's been very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Gripper, Alderman McGinnis?
No. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone for. Yep, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance tonight and be safe.